I pledge my pledge, everybody just raise your hand if you would.
Put the flag.
The flag, yeah, the flag changed up.
Put it back.
First thing I'll bring to. But we thank for this day and another opportunity, Lord, to be gathered here together, Lord, as a community, to seek your will, to seek what is good for the people here of the town of Fort White. Praise that it will be done, Lord, that you guide us, that you listen to us, that you understand, and that you bless and protect everyone that's here tonight, Lord, and once again, we thank you. Amen.
Amen. I pledge my pledge to the flag, on the highest place of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, and in the physical with liberty and justice for all.
Oh, forgot to call an order, did I? You called us an order? You made the pledge, Mr. Burkini, if you wouldn't, the roll call, please.
Mayor Thomas?
Here.
Councilmember Florence? Councilmember Terry?
Here.
Councilmember Coon?
Here.
Councilmember Merritt?
Here.
Town clerk?
Here.
Town attorney?
Okay, additions, deletions, changes, approval of the agenda. Anybody have anything they want to add to this, as short and sweet as it is, or not, just need a motion to prove it as it is?
I haven't looked at the next agenda, but I want to make sure the next time that we're talking about the sewage, and we're revisiting the recycling, but I see that's on here tonight, and the water.
The water will be on the next one?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Is the sewage on there too? I have, I have it up in the back.
It's on for January.
January?
Yeah, I think we've got that on January.
No.
Well, don't we want to move that up and start talking about that, because a lot of these things have just been kind of...
Yeah.
We can't, we can't get it on the agenda by next week.
No.
Yeah, I was, that's the only thing.
And too, we was having some of the people that, uh, drawing it up and all to be here. So, I guess it'll be on January's agenda. That's the stormwater?
Yeah. The sewer.
Right.
Is mainstream on the agenda for next time, Main Street and CRA?
But I think the CRA, correct me if I'm wrong, the CRA, second reading, I think is on there. Main, out of about Main Street.
Yes, Main Street.
Okay, so I just need a motion to approve this?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Okay, has it got a second?
That's it.
Well, all in favor of approving as is, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposing, aye. Okay, passed. Public comment from the audience there? Anything here on the agenda? All right, very well. Okay, new business, so the first one, the presiding officers, kind of stuff is clavatory, the new town charter mandates that a presiding officer be appointed by the board, so it used to be the mayor by default. For whatever reason, it was changed, so now the town council has to appoint the presiding officer.
Will the meetings be held the same way?
Everything's exactly the same. It's just, the only one who would lead it is whoever the council chooses to appoint.
I mean, that, that's, say, if, like the mayor, because the mayor's always let it. And he didn't quite want to answer something, but I did. That's still not going to stop me from answering that question, because you're leading the meeting, right?
Correct. Yeah, this is not giving whoever you choose as the presiding officer any extra authority.
It's just calling something in our news.
Correct. Correct, it used to be default, now we just have to pick.
I got you.
That's it, that's it, that's what it is.
No more questions from me on that then?
I have one, or not, not so much a question, but the new charter, it still refers to the mayor as the presiding officer.
Yeah.
I was confused about why it was even on the agenda.
Yeah, that's me too.
Yeah, I don't know.
It is.
You're talking about for the section right there where it says presiding officer, mayor, town council?
On page six of the charter that's on the website, it says the town council immediately after the induction of members elected to the town council shall elect one of their own members as a presiding officer and chairperson of the town council, and one member as vice chairperson. At all meetings of the town council, the chairperson or in his or her absence, the vice chairperson shall preside.
Yeah, so it says that on there, it's just, why it was changed though, I don't know.
Right.
But it's how it is, is what it says, so I just want to...
It was just confusing, because it, right off the bat, it refers to the mayor as the presiding officer.
Yeah.
But it's stricken. It says the mayor shall...
I don't think I looked at that.
It's, and it's stricken out.
I think, I think, Jane, I think you're talking about the title. It says, it says presiding officer, whether anyone, but you can be in the section.
Right. This could be...
It says...
Maybe that should be...
The banner says, the banner says on section two, it says, presiding officer, mayor.
Maybe that should be stricken, if that's not the case.
Section two?
Right here.
Oh, you're looking at it.
Oh, section eleven. Yeah.
Eleven, I'm sorry.
It says, it says, presiding officer, comma, mayor, comma, town council. So this is the section that governs the duties and responsibilities of the mayor, the duties and responsibilities of the presiding officer, and the same for the town council. So it's a list, it's a list, it's a list that this section will address who the presiding officer will be, who the mayor will be, the town council, and what their role will be. And then in that section, it says, this is how you go about running the presiding, yeah, but, but, yes, I, it was default, now it's changed, yeah, so...
I would say the mayor is the presiding officer.
I think we got, just make somebody else that if you wanted to.
But we refer to you as...
So then, so then we just need some, so then someone just make a motion, yeah. I guess, so we just need a motion, maybe whoever council people should be, and then maybe more formality, but, but they, it's how it's arranged, so...
I'll make a motion when, we use the, the mayor for the presiding officer.
Okay.
Just the way it reads.
Okay, very well, all in, uh, favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, aye? Okay, so we'll keep that as is.
And I had to leave early last time, I got to come back before then, but I think y'all, when you're the vice mayor, Ms. Terry at last minute?
Correct.
Is she going to preside if he's not here?
In case you were out, then you would preside.
I think that's...
By default.
That's stated as well.
Good.
On this page.
That is stated.
Okay, the breakfast with Santa, so we're having a breakfast with Santa, uh, actually this Saturday at, what time is that? It's about nine, about nine AM. So what we're voting on here basically is just that, hey, the town council votes and approves that this is an official town council event. We don't have to pay the fee to do this, breakfast with Santa there at the community center.
We're waiting to pay.
Well, you'd pay it yourself.
I mean, yeah. Yeah, I mean, we don't, at the end of the day, we don't have to, the council could vote, but yeah, so if the town council hosts it, for the kids, it's...
If I could say again, and I talk too much, I'll apologize.
You're going.
But there's huge excitement for this in the community, and if the town, I think, associated itself with it in a formal way, not only the benefit of not having to worry about the fees, but it would just make the town look great. The town itself, instead of one individual.
That's been happening for about a month.
Yes, ma'am.
So, yeah, so this, again, this is just to formalize it, make it formal, and waive the fee, so we don't have, because I think it's, we got some, yeah, we got sponsors who are voluntary that do, I think a lot of, I think they collect it, they know the foods, they're doing a lot of...
Well, there's a lot of hands in the pot.
And then we got, and then we got sponsor much, yeah.
My man right there is a big food person.
So...
Thank you, I know.
You're welcome, thank the Lord.
So, yeah, so I, I would just need a motion if it's, town council's going to vote to formally sponsor it, and if we want to waive the fee, get a motion on that, we won't waive it or nothing.
I think the wording should be the town council in conjunction with the businesses, or the town itself, because that's what all the sponsors...
The town, it was sponsored by the town, okay, we can do that.
The town and the businesses of the town.
You are...
And actually, individuals, I mean, Rocky has stepped forward.
Yeah, yeah.
On the flyer, it lists eleven.
Yeah, I think it's got some of them on there, yeah.
And it says, the town of Fort White Breakfast with Santa, and it says, special thanks to our sponsors, and they're listed at the bottom.
They need to be...
It's like Miss Connie said, if you don't do it, you're going to waive the fees, or you're going to pay your own self.
Yeah, there's no fees to waive, you pay yourself.
If the town does it.
Yeah.
If the town does it, right.
Right.
So, but I, it just needs to be delineated, however we're going to do it, we just got to make a motion to do it. Uh, yeah, it's going to be hosted formally.
I'll make the motion, breakfast with Santa, sponsored by the town of Fort White, in conjunction with the citizens or individuals, as well as the businesses of Fort White, who have stepped forward to play a role.
Okay.
And it's not a balanced role, like somebody's cooking while someone else just wrote a check, you know, and I don't mean that to discount anything. But I've been, and I posted this, just overwhelmed with how many people have stepped forward to donate and...
Okay, second? Got one, got a second? You got a second?
That's it.
Okay, very well, all in favor of the breakfast with Santa being a joint sponsorship between the town and the businesses, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, aye? Okay, okay, so I, I thought of something for this breakfast with Santa, so for the proceeds, the revenue that we get from the businesses, so if we don't, I mean, ideally, we're going, you know, try to find a way to spend it all, give something away to the kids, or somehow, some way, but if we don't, what should we do with those funds, or we'll send them back to the businesses, or...
For me personally, you just opened up a whole nother can of worms. We've had a, um, kitty, for lack of a word, an amount of money that's given to, say, I'm just making this up, the FFA, if they come in and say, we're going to a cow show, would y'all be interested in giving us some money? And to my knowledge, there's never been any kind of set criteria of how that money's been given away. Where I sat in a meeting where a thousand dollars was given away, and then in that same meeting, or maybe in the next, the people were completely denied for any sponsorship. And then Kelly came in with trunk or treat, which is, you know, we need to be involved in that, and got five hundred of money we didn't have. So, everyone I've talked to, and I, Connie might know to talk with this as well, they're under the understanding that that will be in reserve for another purpose, to give back to the community.
Okay, okay, so we could do that. Personally, I think if we don't use it for this event, we give it back to the businesses. Personally, I think that's probably the most kosher route, not, not that any other route is unlawful or anything, but...
Yeah.
If we solicit funds for the breakfast with Santa, we don't spend them, I say we just give back, if we have another event to get them, my opinion.
I think we'll make a check with the businesses, and, and, like Rocky, the private, and ask them, is it okay if we put it in the kitty?
And I'm looking at Connie, because she's dealt with some of the...
I don't want, I don't want to...
The problem that you have is people donate physical goods, and other people donate money. So how are you going to divvy that up? And how are you going to give back? You, you, it's...
If they donate a hundred dollars...
Because there's, there's a group that's going to come in and physically be there and donate in-kind labor, yeah. But then somebody else will write a check or something, or somebody else will donate a pile of toys, so there's no way to really...
Is this going to be a yearly event, are you going to try to do this every year?
Probably, yes.
It's like we do trunk or treat. We take the money, if we, if we got two, if we got candy left over, we store it till it's back to trunk or treat, and we, we use it then. You can store this money, put it in an account or whatever, put it back.
Yeah.
Make sure when you do the breakfast with Santa, you got to store it.
And upfront, I think everybody has known that, like, you can store all that.
I think, I think all the businesses would be good with that.
Yes.
Maybe next year.
But it's a good idea to let them know where it's going to.
Yeah, I think next year, we just let them know when they set the funds.
I will tell you this, last year, Sun Stop gave us a five hundred dollar gift card, an actual gift card, okay? It wasn't money, and it was something that had an expiration date on it, so we didn't need it. So because we didn't need it, we gave that gift card back to Sun Stop and said, thank you very much, we hope you'll be able to help us next year, we had enough cash donations where we didn't need to use that gift card, because it was limited to what they sell at their store.
Yeah, it was okay.
Well, in a situation like that, we might have to...
Right, right.
I'd be of all the advice. Yeah, in the past, with, um, designating these amount of funds for this purpose was problematic, and where do you put that money? Which account does it go in, you have to open a new account? I remember Ms. Revel's one time just flat refused to accept that designation, because it would have meant a lot more, another account, obviously.
It's not that hard if you keep a ledger. All you have to do is keep a ledger and keep it in the file, that shows the...
It didn't seem like it should be that hard, but she just was not about it.
Yeah, it's not.
Okay.
I just have to make sure I get all the receipts, everybody has to turn in all the receipts and stuff, so we have an accurate account for what we've spent.
Okay, I, I don't think that's entirely unreasonable, I do, next year, I say we do, just let them know, and let them choose, hey, I want my money back, fine, you know?
Everyone that I've talked to, they know.
Yeah, I don't think it'll...
With the exception of, of, you know, we had any talk, because I, I know you're knowledgeable enough to know that I'm not going to save a banana that you have left over. And, um, Ruben was saying with sausages, sausage and pancakes.
Right, I guess it's more...
That's why I said it's not a balanced give.
Yeah, there's really no way to...
Do we, do, do we want, do we want a motion that we keep it and use it just to recover it, it's official?
Well, what we can do is we can wait until after the event. I can do the, I could total up all the expenditures, show what was given, total up the expenditures, so that is totally transparent, and give a report, and have it at the next meeting, and y'all can make a motion to carry it forward to the next year.
We'll tell you about it.
Yeah, yeah, let's do that.
And on that same note, like the yard sale, we said, we raised about six hundred dollars on that yard sale. That's not going to turn around and buy a lawnmower for the maintenance guys. That money should go right back into another community event, or a scholarship sponsoring FFA, or STEM, or the band, whatever it is. But we really need a policy of how to submit an application for donation, and then a limit of what that donation will be.
Right, and how it'll be, you, yeah, I agree, I, and I guess that's what I was getting at, we just need to formalize it and make it official.
I talked to her about that, and she, she's all for it, and talked to, um, our attorney about proofing it before it actually comes to our meeting.
Just to people stop trumping, yeah, I agree, good, that, that's really what I was getting, okay. Very, all right, so that is...
If I could add, I really believe your donations should be for something that brings people to Fort White's theme. I don't, me personally, paying for school field trips, or this and that, that, if it don't bring revenue to the town of Fort White, to the businesses or something, I don't know that...
That's a good point.
It should go, then my, I mean, just call us new, just thinking, it should go to something Fort White sponsoring.
Yeah.
Something, something...
I agree, because that's what I'm agreeing with.
Well, if you have criteria that you have to meet in order to be considered for a donation, you can have that criteria in there, and then it takes the favoritism out of it.
That's exactly my point with the, um...
I agree.
The sponsorship of, it's not, I'm not against FFA, that just keeps popping in my head, because they got those big...
You're not careful, you'll say, well, they, you give this to them, why are you giving this to me?
Well, I witnessed one that was very...
We had a CHS quarterback club come forward, kind of, and they want us to give them money, well, that's all fine, but next thing you're going to have is the baseball team, and Fort White quarterback club, and, you know, there's no end where it stops, you know?
And people hear you got it, but they're going to want some of the money.
I can promise you I've washed more cars than anybody in this room, so I know about how hard it is to get that money, you know, as a teacher, and as any kind of coach. Who is responsible for approving right now, the way it stands, whether donations are given to whomever or not? Who makes that call?
The council.
You do.
Yes, okay.
You were part of that.
And that's why I bring it up, so that it's official, but...
I just know processes that wasn't like that before, they were like...
They come up, and they ask, and we voted on it.
So, yeah, but I agree, and I think that's what they're getting at.
We voted on it, my own, and we voted on if they get it or not.
We need a policy, like, what's the policy?
Everyone I've ever known has come through the council anyway.
Yes.
Okay, good, all right. Uh, Fort White Christmas Parade, so, I think it was Don Kadrain with, uh, maybe Dix Realty, I think it was, uh, submitted to do the Christmas parade, I think we had one last year. Yeah, I think we had one last year, yeah.
Yeah.
I was, I think I was it. So, yeah, and there's the route thing, I didn't study it, I think it's the same route, so... Questions, I guess, before we move to anything? Questions on that?
Is this, we're just giving the, like we always do, the... Just giving approval and...
Well, they needed approval ahead of time, and according to the land development code, for something that is not a recurring event, or larger than this, um, I have the ability to approve that, and they needed the approval to go to DOT to get the permission to use forty-seven and twenty-seven. So if you'll see on the application that's in your packet, I signed off on it.
Just so they wouldn't get stolen or...
So, uh, I signed off on it on November the twenty-second, so that they get submitted to DOT, and to the sheriff's department, because the sheriff's department has to block off traffic, and they need the notification ahead of time. So, it's the same day as the breakfast with Santa, that's why we did that same day, so people can come to breakfast with Santa, and then leave and go to the parade, that starts at noon.
Connie, why is it so late in the game when it's just becoming Fort White for approval? Did they just not ask?
They didn't bring it in before then, I know Dawn was sick, and, um, there were some issues with this siding, it got out the chamber from Lake City, because the chamber does the parade, or it's something up there, the same day, and so a lot of the floats that they use, they wanted to come down here, so this, they could do the parade both the same.
And this is pretty much, uh, Mr. Kadrain and Ms. Dix?
Yes.
They, are they still Fort White Business Council?
Well, it is in name only, they aren't doing anything with the business council, it's just what they submitted it under.
Yeah, when they submitted it, I think it was the day, I think it was the day after we had already had our November meeting, so... That's our flag called the special meeting.
He brought it in on the twenty-second of November.
I'd like to add to that, the tourism committee in, um, Lake City for Columbia County Tourism Development, they pretty much recognized Dawn and Susannah as that business committee for the parade, and wanted to make sure, you know, the parade here did not interfere with that time, uh, the evening parade in Lake City. And what you said earlier about bringing money to Columbia County, they have quite a few grants up there that we can bring, like the collective and, um, Fort White produce events that y'all bring, like these tubers, or kayakers, or whatever. There's quite, um, an opportunity to get like a fifty-fifty, um, grant out of that. Rum Island is, is doing some of that. So a lot of this is just being made aware of it, you know, and it's definitely tourism...
We're going to probably do the trunk or treat next year, because it's moving TV season.
Oh, we, we talk about that up there informally, because, you know, you bring in so many people outside of the county. They're not interested in just your neighbor, they want to bring people from outside of the county.
That's why it's important for Fort White to have representation on that council, on that tourist...
I love that, they're having a big, um, this month, actually, that Nike is sponsoring a rugby thing to come into Lake City, the sports park up there, and they're putting on a rugby expedition, and having some clinics to kind of introduce that to this area, because you know, we're softball and baseball dominating. I think it's lacrosse. It is lacrosse, and I kept saying rugby, right, I'm sorry.
This company that we're working with, uh...
Well, lacrosse is just as weird.
They, they're bringing quite a few different sports.
Yeah.
Would, would it be appropriate for one of you guys to try to get on that board?
She is. I'm telling you what happened to her.
Phil was on it, but he had to pull off.
Well, with job changes, I couldn't go there today, I couldn't go there.
And before he, before he and Ms. Mary were on, we've had somebody on for a while. Matter of fact, I was the chairman. Yeah, I was the chairman, uh, for a couple of years, and I got my reputation, step by step.
Okay, all right, so, Fort White Christmas Parade, a motion to approve the permits giving...
I'll make a motion to approve the permit for Fort White Christmas Parade.
Okay, we have a number two?
I'm number two.
Very well, okay, all right, all in favor of approving the permit for the Fort White Christmas Parade, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, aye? Okay, pass as it is approved. Okay, recycling. So I called, well, I took a ride around Buster, uh, he showed me that site, he showed me a couple of other sites that might maybe could work. And I called the counties around us, but typically how it works is, and I think how it did here, I think the county was providing actual service of moving all the...
Yes, the county was.
Yeah, but so the issue we're having was the dumping, so typically, there will be a person provided will be there full-time during the hours of the operation. So I think if we can get something like that, that would be good. I don't think, right now, the town, what, we're a hundred and thirty-something home? What is it, a hundred and thirty-nine?
We couldn't do that, we couldn't do that, period.
So at that, so calling the surrounding counties, I was like, um, oh, somebody... Okay.
That's a no.
Okay, so, but, but, but anyway, but just so that we have an understanding of how it works, typically, it's something like that. Um, there are a few facilities, and I think right now, there's, there's already two, I think, in Lake City, right? Yeah, there's two in Lake City. There's a little bit of inconvenience, but, then speaking with Buster, he said, I guess, I guess this would be, what, the third time?
I would, I would say that neither one is staffed.
No.
Oh, they're not staffed there either, like you said?
No, neither one, they don't do, they don't have a program like these counties you talked about, they just do it, because the county pays for it. So that's it, I mean, it's not set up like the other counties, where you got a man guarding it, it's open.
Well, one of them, I'm not...
Yeah, one of them had a landfill, but nobody's dropped there.
No, but there are a couple there, and it's going to discourage the dumping.
Yeah, because, because the, the main thing is dumping, really, so...
I'm not for it in that sense, I mean, it'd just be, that's my personal opinion, having to put somebody there and play them along, no.
Right, but, but, and I, and I think, based on the issues we've been having, I, I think the main thing too, is I think we get people from outside of the town limits.
Yeah, some of them are coming.
And that's, well, Buster showed me a picture, there was...
We encountered that the other day, a guy from Gilchrist County brought stuff, not knowing it was flooded, and he was going to dump more than just that there.
Paint and glass and...
Right, and when I did it right on Buster, he's like, look, and there was already, we've been throwing trash over. Right, it was, not even recycling, just throwing trash over, so I, look, I mean, you can decide, I don't...
We'll do some more.
Yeah, right now, I don't, but I'll see if anybody wants to bring a motion to either leave it open, or reopen it, or just need it closed, at least for now, until we, you know, we'll...
I can't, I can't help what people ask you guys to do, but this is not the first time, this has had to come before council. The last time, some of these same people that are saying, we want it back, they sat here and promised the council, I'll volunteer, I'll go down there and have it open. Certainly, and they may have done it once or twice, but that was the end of it, and you got the big mess again. There needs to be a good plan, and to not, some volunteers say they're going to volunteer, that's not, people take the recycling seriously, and I, I don't, I have a problem with that. But if it's not going to be recycled because it's being abused, because that's what happens, they go down there and they see all this stuff in there, with the glass and all, and they just throw it off to the dump, nothing gets recycled.
Well, and the other thing we found is that you can have it in an open area that's visible in the daytime, but as soon as it gets dark, there they are.
Yeah, that's, that's an issue we have, I, I don't know, yeah, I guess maybe Lake City's not as prevalent, or, but here, we, we have, I mean...
Well, one of them's sitting at a fire station, I mean, you...
Okay, see, so that's a little...
It's not, neither one of them in Lake City's sitting like that one was.
Right.
But, but we do have, you mean at one?
Oh, they, they do, they do.
We don't have people to dump stuff.
Well, that's how they're dumping dirt roads, just some random dirt road, and they dumped it all out.
Now, one of the last, we don't have the problem with as much, because they have to come through a gate, but, uh, the one at the fire department, we're, we're having fights about it all the time, people dumping stuff.
Okay, so I...
And this time, I'll make a motion to leave the recyclers center closed.
Okay, got a second?
Second.
Second, okay, all, yeah, okay, all in favor of leaving it closed, say aye? Aye, all opposed, aye? Very well, so that's... Okay, citizen, anybody?
Thank you, guys.
Any party?
I've got, thank you.
I've got.
I've got a couple, I've got a couple things, go ahead.
I just want to say on that same note, like talking about hiring someone to sit there, wait for someone to come throw something in the garbage, um, we need to take a hard look at where all our money's going, and where income is coming from, because we're, we're not a real productive... we're not a real productive money-making town, and we need to look at a lot of that. And that's why I want to see Main Street on the agenda, CRA on the agenda, and
And they're all coming up to the
Yeah.
Couple things, I would like to have, where you got item four for citizen comment, I would like to have a comment for the council before the citizens speak. For the councilmen to speak after, after the meeting, in case they wanna bring something up, need to talk about, I would like that put in there. And also, these special meetings, I know this is your first time having one, I think, and the way I took it before, they always walk around asking when we're available for these meetings. They can just say, "Hey, we're having a meeting, so it's up." I mean, done that this time, you see the councilman in here, and our lawyer's not here. If it was something important, I would like both of them to be here, for voting reasons. I mean, I would like to see, make more of an effort. I know this was rushed because of the breakfast and the parade, I understand that. But if this was something important, we got two important people that's not here, I would like to see if we can get a better connection between everybody and make sure everybody's loaded.
I totally agree with that.
Or try, we give it a try. I mean, I know there's certain things, well, I gotta call a date. You know, if we can't get everybody together, then we'll just have to call a date. And another thing, the water, I'm hearing that you're asking, telling the county that you're planning bringing the water back to Fort White.
I told the counties that I, I spoke today, I spoke to Rocky, and I told him that I personally am considering it, and at some point, I will bring it before the council to make the decision. I can't take the water back. We got to
Yeah, well, I think you can, I'm just saying.
Yeah, yeah.
We got a big meeting down there.
I remember, I
I mean, this is just me speaking now, there's three other councilmen about this water, because it stays on the agenda. I've been living here ever since that well's been put in. We do not have good water there. Nobody has proved that there's good water there.
It's good now.
No, it's, no, wait till you get, we, in a three-month drought with no rain, with no wastewater going in the system, wait till that water comes and see what happens. It doesn't, every time it starts raining, that water gets bad around there again. The citizens are tired of this water, and I'm tired of it, that's just my opinion.
I agree with that, and it's been twenty years of bad water. James, how long have you had bad water?
I think I'll just turn it on tonight.
Yeah.
Please.
I know Monica wasn't there that meeting, Mary was there, she voted on it, he wasn't there, I mean, he's not here tonight, so I can't speak for everybody, I'm just telling you my opinion about that water around there.
Right.
I was born in nineteen sixty-two, my parents lived here in the forties. That railroad track right there is the cause of our water. All these wells was tested a while back, all these guys that's got these wells outside of town, did irrigate, all them were bad. All them tested bad, so, I mean, that's where we stand with the water, that's why I fought so hard, just to stay away from it. Because I don't have it, I've got a well, and my water bad, and I live on the other side of the fire station, through woods. That's just me, okay?
The water is just one example of how we need to, this might not be the correct word, but I'm gonna say it, reunite with the county and try to get more things working
Here, here.
Together. Because if that well broke down, let's say a tornado topped that well over, the big water tank over, we don't have money to fix that. I mean, you might have a Beverly Hillbillies style of water coming up out of the ground, but it's not gonna last.
Yeah, I don't think it's worth taking on that, but, yeah, I see
The tanks are twenty-five years old, they're not gonna be good for so long.
Right.
They must, were the six hundred thousand dollars we priced them at? Connie, the tanks.
We replaced the main one already.
How much are the tanks?
The six hundred and sixty thousand was to bring the water plant up with the total number of improvements that Florida Rural Water came in and did the sustainability plan, and they said it would take six hundred and sixty thousand dollars to get it up to snuff.
Okay, right, so I would agree, and I was talking, I was talking to this with Dave and some of the other operators, but I agree with you that four or five years ago, it wouldn't be a good option. But based on my understanding of the improvements that have been made, based on us switching over to the chloramines, so we finally got a clean water test, and I think, I don't know if the other one came through, or it was about to come through, it'll probably be clean water again.
Yeah.
Now, the rainwater, now the rain, right, but now the rainwater won't make the water dirty as far as unsafe. Now, that may be an issue with the coloration, but there's ways around the coloration as well.
No.
I mean, okay, that's your opinion, that's your opinion.
That's my opinion, we don't have the money to fix it if someone's all around there. We don't have the money to upkeep it.
We, yeah, we would have money to upkeep it, and anything that needs replacing.
We will lose
Where's the money to upkeep it coming from?
So we request this from the town, we got the estimate of what?
It's about we?
It's about myself and Connie. So, speaking to Dave, it's about seventeen thousand a month in revenue that we get charging within the town of Fort White. What would the contract be?
With the county doing it, we would receive twenty-five thousand a month.
Twenty-five thousand a year.
Not a month, a year.
Twenty thousand a year. So speaking about the, so that's one of the big pieces, I looked into it, it's not gonna be a huge moneymaker, because a lot of the money, you need to put it back into the water for emergencies. But there is, it appears, and again, I, you know, when I'm ready and I have all the info, I'll show it. Based on the data, what would it cost, what's the contract, how much would it cost to get have it up kept by the
Thirty-five hundred.
Thirty-five hundred a month? Plus, doing, and we, again, I was talking to the county about this, and at some point, I'll present to the council, maybe double that for maintenance, just routine maintenance, chemicals, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. That's a ten thousand a month, ten thousand dollar a month surplus. Now, again, most of that we're gonna keep, because if something does break, every other year that costs a hundred thousand, we need to be able to say, hey, we need a hundred thousand right now, right, because the priority is the water, not making money off of it, is providing clean water. But what I'm saying is this, is if it's possible to provide clean water, and it seems, not based on he says, she says, based on the, based on the data and the DEP report that I have been seeing, the water's clean, it's possible to provide clean water, and we can manage it on our own, we're making even a little bit of money. I just, I think it's worth the council considering, that's all, they can vote it down. So that, so that's what I've been talking to the, to the county about.
When can we see those tests you've seen? Because I've never seen it.
That's, okay, and I can put, um
What happened at the meeting?
Yeah, can we do it, uh
Rocky, do you have any thought on that?
There's a, I can show you the website, it's public, it's a state-owned website.
This isn't, this isn't for this meeting.
No, 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 so anyway, alright, we'll talk after the meeting, after the meeting, we can talk, done here.
I just wanna say one more thing, no backtracking about the breakfast with Santa. I'm the one that's gonna have to go out and buy all this stuff, talked with Connie, and I know that we'll have currently about seven hundred in cash. Y'all want to give me a dollar amount of spend this or don't spend that? Because I'm thinking at least two hundred people are gonna show up to eat, and I'm just ballparking that from last year, they had a hundred and fifty. And this year, the middle school is included, so I don't want to get up there and run out of basic items.
What, like, you're saying like food items?
I think you gotta do the napkin table phones.
You think, but you're saying you think a second hundred might not be enough?
No, that's, that is enough. I think that's more than enough, but I, I just wanna know
Do you wanna go with budget?
Do you need to give me a budget, or do I just say, Connie, here's the receipts, reimburse me?
Well, wait, because
Does that make sense to you? I don't want it to come back next meeting.
If you want to pick it up, you should use your
I gotta go to Dollar Tree, none of this stuff just happens.
If you're saying you'll stay in budget, I guess I'm not seeing what the question
Do you need to say, do y'all need to say, "Yes, Ms. Terry, we think five hundred dollars is an appropriate amount"?
I think that you use whatever was donated, and
Exactly, well, that needs to come out of y'all's mouth and be on record, because I'm not
I make a motion that
Well, that's, okay, I mean
I make a motion that you can use whatever funds was donated in the capacity to fund the Santa, breakfast with Santa.
If they go over that call, we have to make a rest.
Yeah, they won't go over that, I just don't want it coming back to me. That mural came back and several other things, where we're just trying to do what's right, and so far, no rules have been broken, but as y'all know, everybody's got feedback on everything.
Okay, we got a second. Second?
I'll second.
Okay, very well, alright, all in favor of her staying within that, being able to allocate the funds that she was given for the breakfast with Santa, say aye?
Aye.
I'll go say nay? Very well, okay, alright, we are over. Motion to adjourn.
Yeah, make a motion to adjourn.
Second?
That's it.
All in favor to adjourn, we say aye?
Aye.
Aye, I'll go say nay? Alright, getting adjourned.